Go ahead and welcome, everybody, to our December 5th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our November 7th meeting. Any changes need to be made? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes.
She says she makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
An abstention.
And one abstention. All right. Next item on the agenda, UR 2213, a 1152 11 review for AT&amp;T for some buried fiber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is kind of the standard. You've seen the conditions, you've seen the staff report, so really we'll look at the geographic location is on the screen. The only thing I want to emphasize on this one, we're not seeing this, so our locators are, and I'm sorry, I'm hoping anybody that will hear this can, our locators can do 750 feet a day in addition to all of their other jobs, so that's highlighted. I want to make sure they are limiting to that. We get calls where they want, you know, 5,000 linear feet located in one day. We can't accommodate that. So just want to reemphasize this, but this is the same conditions we have on those fiber utility reviews. I won't read them all. If you have any questions, I will be happy. Again, my name's Hunter Simmons, Planning Director, so we're going to try to start using names as we just discussed before the meeting. So I know all of you know me, but I did forget as I jumped up here trying to rush through this one. So this is the same recommendations of approval that we give every month.
Thank you, Hunter Simmons, Planning Director. Is anybody here on behalf of AT&amp;T? If not, this is not a public hearing. Does anybody have anything they wish to say about this item? In that case, commissioners?
I move UR 2213 AT&amp;T utility review that we approve, subject to staff recommendation.
I've got a motion and a second to approve subject to staff recommendation. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, the next item on the agenda is a rezoning for some land on Greeno Road. Zoning items actually are ordinances, so they can only be enacted by the city council. So in this case, we'll have a public hearing and we will make a recommendation to the city council that will ultimately make the decision on this case.
Okay. I'm Michelle Melton, city planner, prepared this one. Okay, the applicants are Clifford Street Jr. and Ken Street, and they're co-trustees of the Street Living Trust, which is the parents' request the subject property be rezoned from R1, which is low-density, single-family residential to the highway transitional district, which is relatively new, but there are a handful of them. The property consists of four parcels, it's totaling approximately 3.5 acres, and the parcels are on either side of the entrance to Huntington Woods when their entrance is Farrington Boulevard, which is off of South Greeno Road. There is one parcel located north of Farrington Boulevard and the rest are situated south. And this is just a rezoning request, there are not any immediate plans for development. So therein lie the parcels. So the intent of the highway transitional district, and I had to learn about this one because I wasn't familiar with it, but is to provide an alternative properties along state highways within the city of Fairhope that are beyond the area of influence of the village nodes or commercial nodes as they are identified in our comprehensive plan, and to provide development opportunities consistent with the city's vision for commercial corridors. And unlike other districts within this section, the HTD is not an overlay district and does not affect any property owners other than those who voluntarily apply for zoning to district to district, which the applicants have done. So some of the requirements is that the highway transitional district requires parcels to have a minimum of 100-foot fronting, Highway 98, 104, 181, in this case, 98. However, there is one, and this wasn't in the packet, that is inner, and so that property line will have to be replatted so they can all fall into that, which they're willing to do. So we approve, we recommend approval of this case so long as there are replat to dissolve the lot lines between those two vertical parcels. That's yours. The end.
All right, do we have any questions for staff at this time? We'll have the public hearing in just one second, sir. Any questions for staff at this time? All right. In that case, Ken, do you have anything to add to this?
I spoke with us all over there. He would do the work if he wanted.
Okay, perfect. All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Whoever comes up, you're going to state your name and your address so we can get you for our public record. Thank you.
My name is Steve Archer and I live at 110 Southwork Avenue in Huntington Woods. I am the cul-de-sac property that butts up against the property that he wants to purchase or has purchased and wants to develop in the property in front of me that he's taken trees down from and caused a flood in my yard. I have a video on here of the last time it rained, of what it did to my yard. I've had the city of Fairhope out, I've had engineers out, I've had him out, I've had my neighbors out that own the property back behind me that's on a hill, which is going to create more flooding for me, because nobody is responsible for it. The developer went bankrupt, the city says, "Not our problem," engineer said, "Not my problem," homeowners, "Not our problem," and we have nowhere to go. I've got one pipe in the corner of my property taking that water for two neighborhoods now because the back neighborhood that was just built got access to be able to drain into our retention pond that it can't hold. And now we're paying the price for it. We're paying with our dues because we have to fix and replace rock on our retention pond. Now it's going to be more water. And if you saw this video, you'd understand what I'm saying. The water comes out of the woods, my property extends about five feet into the woods. That's a natural fence for me. I have two dogs, they know the line, they stay inside my yard. I don't have to have a fence. When the rain comes from the first parcel property that they bought and they cleared the trees out of there, they created coverts, and the water rushes down off 98, it comes right into the back of Huntington Woods on my property. That pipe can't handle that. If it gets developed above me, on the other side of me, I'm going to get flooded out. Please don't approve this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Lettiger, and I live at 411 Ellington Avenue in Huntington Woods. And my question is, why change the zoning if they don't know, the Streets family doesn't know what they're going to do there? Let's wait until they know what they're going to do there so we can have some input on what's going there. And if there's buildings there, or can they store things there? Do they have to put a fence around whatever they store it? Can they lease it to someone else? Can they build buildings there? Are they one, two, three stories high? Storing of equipment, could trucks be stored there? Could gasoline, any kind of fuel be stored there? And the entrance and exit to this particular property, is that as you enter Huntington Woods, where they would enter or exit there? Or would they enter or exit from 98 to do something? I mean, we don't know what they're going to do there. And we don't know actually if it's going to be the Streets family or they would lease it to someone else.
Correct. Right, this is a zoning request, and regardless of a zoning request, they could come in with, you know, shiny plans, and when they get a rezone, change it the next day. The zoning requests are done separately than building permits. So basically, they're coming in under a, they're requesting a highway transitional district, which is basically a retail office zoning that was put together by the city to address Greeno to try to protect, you know, most people in that area of Greeno wouldn't want to live right there on Greeno Road. So, but on the other hand, you know, we've been directed so much to not allow Greeno Road to grow like Airport Boulevard in Mobile. So this district was come up with a way to kind of try to protect the surrounding houses and the view from Greeno, but yet address the elephant in the room that most people don't want to live, you know, narrow lot like that on Greeno Road. But as far as that goes, you know, he's within his rights to ask for the zoning at any time, and just if he were to ask for the zoning, what he requested to do at that time, you know, wouldn't be said in any kind of stone at all. As far as the ingress egress off of Greeno Road, that would come, you know, later, and frankly, our group here wouldn't have a lot to do with that. That's Aldot that does most of, you know, does the permitting, you know, to get into a state highway like that.
So we're going from meeting to meeting to meeting.
Right. So that would be Aldot's concern.
I think it's important to note, too, that there have been many, 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 many years, not just one or two, but many years, there have not been a residence built on Greeno Road. I would guess probably since maybe the mid-1970s. So it's been, it's been a battle, there've been attempts to do some kind of an overlay district in the past for Greeno Road that would, that would let people have input into what was going to go on, and then that got deep-sixed and this highway transition zone is, district is kind of a fallback position that staff has put together for us.
And that just started.
Well, part of it's already happening, has been happening up on the north end of Greeno Road, up near, up near the Auburn Experiment Station, for example. Part of it's happened up there, it's just down to the south, it hasn't happened very much yet.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I address this question, too?
Yes, sir.
I think you ask a good question, you have a right to ask that question. Let me, let me tell you a little bit about what's allowed in the highway transitional district, which might alleviate some of your concerns, I can't say that it will. So you've got, under dwellings, you've got a single family, or two-family or town home, and then you have mixed use, which is allowed, which is a combination of a commercial and residential. Then you've got elementary school, secondary school, and education facility. I don't think the Baldwin Board of Education is going to build any schools there in that, in that space, I just don't think that's going to happen. And then you've got a public open space, a park, you say, or a common open space, which certainly is not offensive, I don't think to anyone. And then under office space, you have general and professional. There's no mention of service stations, gas stations, you know, junkyards, it's not allowed. Retail's not even listed in as one of the spaces there. So that might alleviate some of your concerns as to define what is allowed and what's not allowed. And as, as Mr. Dias pointed out, you know, the R1 is not fair, we don't believe, to the property owner on Greeno Road. Nobody's built the home there in 50 years, and there's, nobody's going to build a single-family residence there, more than likely, but this will allow them to if they want to. The highway transitional doesn't rule it out either. But does that give you a little bit more definition as to what's allowed?
Sure. What about the retail?
Well, and let me, because you do have, there was a full sheet of, somehow I think that one was cut off, so if you wouldn't mind, I got the full version in the backside of the packet.
Okay.
It jumps down after, after that into retail. And again, the white circles are, would have to go to another hearing if, just for the use.
On appeal.
On appeal. General merchandise, that's a smaller store, outdoor sales, limited, garden center, limited, all of those are on appeal. Nursing home, clinic, on appeal. Outdoor recreation facility. A daycare is a by right use, and a bed and breakfast is a by right use.
Hunter.
Yes, sir.
Explain to him what, what by appeal means, just so we...
So we have by right uses, and those are allowed, you could just go straight to get a building permit.
And that's what I mentioned to you.
Yes. And that's, and then we have the other ones, and there's really not too many within this district that would, you would have to go to the board of adjustment at this time for the appeal of that, provide a site plan. We can actually look and see exactly what extent...
Neighbors get notified?
Yes, neighbors get notified of that. You know, there's, so, and then I want to make sure people also understand, a lot of these things, like town home is listed here, but we have certain requirements within the zoning ordinance that, you know, I don't think you're going to be able to get 500 town homes here. You know, there's, there's certain requirements, you know, but we have to have a zoning district that is flexible enough for all different varieties of property. So I think this was the...
And then there are buffers generally, depending on the use, vegetated buffers that would be required to protect residential that adjoins these types of facilities.
The buffers, could they be changed to, they take away so many trees, they got to replant so many trees somewhere else?
They have all those, yeah. All those requirements, depending on what they decide to come in and do, would be there. If they decided to come in residential, there'd be one set of requirements. If they did retail, there would be another.
But that could happen.
Yes. And I would expect it to.
And I will say, that was, that was very, you know, there's some nice trees on this property currently. You know, the HTD will protect, have a level of protection there that residential would not.
Significant trees are protected in commercial development, where they're not residentially, you can cut down every tree on your property and the tree ordinance doesn't apply, but with a commercial development, the tree ordinance does apply.
Can this zoning be changed to another zoning later on?
He can request it, that's all the city council's decision.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question for staff now that point.
Let's wait till we get the public hearing closed, if that's okay.
It was to the first gentleman's comments.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
It was, thank you. It has to do with the drainage and the fact that he's concerned over additional runoff. Is it, is it true that if it was to be developed, that any future development would have to contain the water that falls on that property?
I would, I would appreciate that.
Is that, do we have laws to that effect?
So, again, it's different criteria. What triggers the subdivision regulations? There could potentially be a project. Let's say somebody put in four town homes, that would trigger the subdivision regulations so they have to meet that set of requirements for stormwater management.
But if somebody built a single-family home, maybe not.
Maybe not. And that's just building permit, we would look at it, building permit and the requirements we do look at then, so...
What about professional office space? Does that trigger it?
One would not, three would. So three would trigger the MOP, three units would trigger the MOP requirements of the subdivision regulations, which have a full section of stormwater and treatment and those guidelines.
What happens if somebody builds one, and then one, and then one?
Third one triggers it.
For everybody?
Yeah, that's, that is typically on one piece of property. Now, what you do see unique here...
Normally, you'd have to subdivide that property first.
Usually, you would have to.
Or if you were going to do three buildings, you would get the three building permits at one time. I mean, not to say you would have to, but usually it's unusual for somebody to take a piece of property like this and put one building on the corner, then come back and put another, and then another. I mean, not that they couldn't, you see that with, with many storage sometimes that wouldn't be allowed here, but with offices and retail, it could, but it's rare. But most of, even though when the, you know, Eric Kertinas on building permits typically looks on that on commercial buildings.
Yeah, and it is looked at, it just doesn't get those treatments, but you could do two on per property.
Let me ask you the question another way. I'm not saying that, and I'm not, I'm not trying to just give you an answer you want to hear, sir, I think it's a valid question. But is it not true that there are times at which the development might actually improve your situation instead of making that situation worse? Is that, is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
I mean, if the water's rushing off right now with no improvement at all...
Right.
You know, if I'm a developer, you know, I don't want to take the possibility of a lawsuit and exacerbate the facts. I mean, I want to try to contain my water and have it go somewhere, you know, where it's not going to cause damage, that's just...
And also don't want to come and face the neighbors who are going to be my neighbors. I want to be a good neighbor, and I want to be responsible, knowing this neighbor's going to come to the meeting and fight the site plan review and everything else.
Yeah.
Can I show you a video, please? It's a real quick video.
You can, you can, but with that said, with, you know, there's no improvements on it, the land's just how God had it.
No, I understand, but I, I just want the board to understand why I'm standing here today. We started this before...
No, I understand, but basically, the property's how God made it, and whether it zoned this or zoned that, it's going to be exactly like it is right now.
I understand.
When the improvements come, is when you need to kind of talk to the engineers that they have and talk to the developer about making changes...
Right.
...to protect you. As far as it goes, right now, they're just, you know, changing a couple letters on a piece of paper that won't affect you at all. When the improvements come, when the improvements come, whether they do it residentially or whether they do it commercially, they can dump a lot more water on you, or they could protect you tremendously based on how they, they do it, and that's the time that you need to, you know, come and discuss that. The letters on the paper now aren't going to affect you.
Right now, they won't, but the traffic for the school and all the kids and everything else that we didn't do in the beginning.
True. Yes, sir. All right, anybody else wish to speak to this item?
In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. All right, go ahead.
I move that we recommend to the city council approval of case ZC 22.16, subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to recommend approval, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do you know who that came from?
I did not do that.
Yeah, all right. Everybody should stay awake to make the vote.
I think that...
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think that the citizens asked some good questions, and we need to be mindful of those. I think that sometimes when you develop a piece of property next to a residential area, there's, there's always a lot of concern. I can remember once on the north side of Greeno, when there was a bank built beside a small subdivision, there was, there's actually a cul-de-sac there, and there's four or five lots that back up to this bank. And since that time, those citizens have said to me that the banks are a great neighbor. You know, they're open nine to five, there's nobody out in the yards screaming, there's, there's nobody there on the weekends, and so sometimes a professional space next to you can have benefits. I know that near me, I actually have a real estate office, and there's a doctor's office, and I don't, I never hear anything. I'm not telling you, I can't guarantee you that, sir, I can't, but sometimes it's not, sometimes it just doesn't turn out that bad. Sometimes it's the lesser of, of whatever evil might come that way. It's always, you know, everybody always wants nothing to be by them, but in lieu of that, sometimes the outcome can be better than you anticipate.
Well, they're going to have to grade anything, they're going to have to put in a parking lot, they're going to have to put drainage for that, and they're going to have to have protection with that.
Generally, it'll be, generally, it's a lot better after than before, even if you're having issues generally.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Yeah, yeah, you don't have a vote, I was just saying, blew me off, I didn't know where that came from. Don't play tricks on my ears now. With the exception of one person in the audience.
Appreciate the effort.
The motion passed unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is public hearing to request the city of Fairhope's Planning and Zoning Department to accept resolution 202207. Mike, you doing that one, or?
I can't.
Or is Hunter doing that one? You're doing that one, Hunter?
Not, not going to, the resolution's in the, in your staff report. You know, the, as you all know, we've been working for almost two years now, or approaching two years, to try to get a long-term agreement to maintain the planning jurisdiction outside the city limits. We've been alerted by the Baldwin County that they plan on in July to take over...
Can we just close the door or something? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Ladies and gentlemen? It gets hot if we... They do plan on taking over those in July, coming out of the moratorium for various reasons.
Thank you.
You know, this is one of the options, the city council did have the public hearing to bring the permitting, your building permits back to the city limits. That will be on the next city council meeting for final adoption. This is a related resolution for the planning jurisdiction, so this would bring us back to the city limits, which has pros and cons.
But it's happening anyway.
By July, we have, it is happening.
And this is basically just because it's kind of a, keeps us out of the no-man's-land where we, you know, kind of from here on out, is that correct? You know, it was just kind of silly for us to get started with long-term projects that then might come.
That's, that's correct, and by the nature of the act, just to be technically precise, we are not reducing the planning jurisdiction. The planning jurisdiction will still exist and remain for the city. The implication is the city and its planning commission will not enforce its subdivision regulations on certain projects outside of the city limits within that planning jurisdiction because the county will be taking over in the city's planning jurisdiction. You look at me inquisitively, like, why is that? The law also allows the county to back out of the planning jurisdiction, in which case the city could come back in and fill that void. So we're not reducing what is the planning jurisdiction of the city, we are standing by because the county was unwilling to enter into an agreement with us to allow this municipal planning commission to regulate in that area. And if and when the county at some future date decides they don't want to regulate in the planning jurisdiction of Fairhope anymore, this body would have the ability potentially to go back and enforce its subdivision regulations in that area.
So the planning jurisdiction just is dead in the water, just sort of sitting out there and moved?
It's a halo that really won't mean anything for a while, potentially.
Well, I've got several, several questions. Your comprehensive plan, then, within what area are you operating or thinking you're going to operate with a comprehensive plan? If you don't have a planning jurisdiction, it's only the city limits now?
Well, being that a comprehensive plan is still a visionary document, not a regulatory, I don't think we plan on really changing the boundaries because a lot of those are, you know, maybe NXN, you know, so we need a vision on, on how those areas will grow. So thankfully, we've spent a year or more, you know, thinking about that, just building on the stepping stones from the past master plans. Nothing will change in that regard, we just won't have any oversight to the subdivision regulations of those outside the city limits.
Okay, so this brings the, the subdivision regulations back to the city limits.
That's correct.
What about the police jurisdiction and the police and fire protection?
We're not here to, we're not doing anything with that.
But you're not getting, you're not...
It's not changing.
You're not getting any permits whatsoever from what you're, you, by pulling back out of the planning jurisdiction, right?
This resolution just gets subdivision regulations, we won't apply to any new applications. The building permit will just handle building, there's nothing changing in the police jurisdiction or fire. Fire has absolutely nothing to do.
Okay, but the county gets the impact fees and the permitting fees, then?
If, yes, yes.
Mr. Burrell?
Yep, I have a problem with it.
So what we've got then is the, is the city citizens are then subsidizing all of the people that live in the, in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, or in this case, within the county, and therefore, fire protection and police protection, right?
Somewhat.
Well, that doesn't make...
Yes and no, because we are, we can collect 50% of the sales tax, lodging tax, in that extraterritorial jurisdiction, the police jurisdiction.
Still?
Yes.
Well, the point is, is we're going here in July regardless. So do we want to pull it January 1?
So, do we want to pull it January 1, as our council has suggested to us, or do we want to just, just be a lame duck for the next few months, you know?
And I'm okay with this resolution. I'm okay with it from a city council standpoint. I just, the, the long-term implications of what, what control we have on our borders is what gives me heartache. You know, a case in point where the new public is being built south of town. I asked Mr. Simmons in a, in a recent council meeting, uh, they, they did some, some zoning, uh, the county did some zoning in a parcel right to the west of the shopping center between a residential area and the shopping center. I said, well, what did they decide to zone that? Well, they decided to zone that, uh, whatever their, or whatever, 15 units an acre. I mean, do you think the Fairhope citizens want that to be 15 units an acre right there? Absolutely not. And did we have a say-so? No. So, when, just the very act of not having any say-so on our borders is, is troubling to me, but until we get this resolved with the, with the county.
But it's, but it seems to me that if you're going to, if, if, if you're not going to have, you're not going to get the permits for subdivision, you're not going to get that money, you're not going to get the impact fees, then yeah, okay, Lee, it's going to come, come July, well, if we want it or not. I guess to me, the question would be, well, heck, tell them, go ahead and take, you take the fire protection and the police protection too. And just throw it all, throw it all on.
Yeah, that may come to that. There are places that we do not want to do that.
That, that, that decision is beyond our pay grade and as far as this resolution goes.
I'm not, I'm not trying to say anything to do with us. I'm just saying, talking about the issues.
I get it. I mean, from a 30,000, you know, foot elevation, you know, I don't like this at all. I mean, you know, um, no one came and, you know, I wish Chris Elliott had come and talked to any planning and zoning person in any municipality and gotten just a modicum of input. You know, when you look at, at this being jerked away from us, you know, when you look at cities such as Gainesville, Boulder, Gainesville, Florida, Boulder, Colorado, you look at a lot of cities that had strong zoning and beautiful cities, and then all of a sudden they did tricks like this, and you just end up with the halo effect of just everything right at the edge of the city limits with the lowest common denominator that shares all of the parks that all of the rest of us pay for and just build with cheap garbage right at the edge of the city limits. And I know that there were some issues with, with family subdivisions, you know, where people went and built houses without getting a subdivision and then came back and, and, you know, the city, the county has never required the, uh, fire protection and a, and a road to get a fire truck down that state law says you need. We always have. And sometimes it costs $400,000 to do, to get a fire truck and a fire plug down at, you know, hydrant down at the end of your property for a piece of property worth $100,000, and it doesn't make sense. And, and that was an issue, you know, that we could have talked about, but I always felt like we should follow state law or the state should change the law. But regardless of that, when we see through the years and years, I've been involved and you've been involved in this, and Jack, you've been off and on this, and everybody else has, when you get this area, you know, these ETJ areas, the people come out in droves with their pitchforks, they always say, you know, we want larger lots. They're worried about the water runoff, the size of the lots, the property values and the traffic. And we require larger lots of this than the county does. We require, you know, more environmental protections than the county does. We require green space. We require landscaping when we do everything we can with the traffic with our connectivity. And I think we've done an excellent job. And if you look at the prices of property and compare them in the, in the county at large to Fairhope or Daphne to Fairhope or Spanish Fort to Fairhope, I think that what we've done has, has shown up, uh, to have worked pretty well. And I take a lot of pride in that and I get insulted, you know, um, by this whole process, to be honest, because, you know, I've been on this joint for a long time and my granddad before me, and we were told, you know, sidewalks being required. This will be the last subdivision ever in Fairhope. Green space required, last subdivision ever in Fairhope. You know, landscaping, last subdivision ever in Fairhope. Water retention, lands, last subdivision ever in Fairhope. LID, last subdivision ever in Fairhope. And here we are with the highest property values in the county because people want to come here because they like the area, you know? And, and all this affordable housing where you've got zero, you know, green space and a lot of kids and post-stamped lots and nowhere for them to go but in the street, you know, that's just not safe. And that's not the standard that Fairhope and the city council has, has, you know, asked us to meet. And, and we've tried to meet that, and this is very disappointing to me, and I, I wish that the county would be willing to work with us in the vision of how Fairhope should grow and why the county cares and wants to come in and govern Gulf Shores and Orange Beach and Fairhope and Locksley and Magnolia Springs and Daphne, Stockton, you know, Baymanet, Locksley. We all have different, you know, different flavors and different things that make our cities go, and, and why they even want that, I have absolutely no idea. But I can tell you where the money came from that pushed all that, you know, pushed all that, and it was from the big developers. And that's always, you know, when you follow the money trail, then you see who's pulling the strings. And that's sad to me, um, that, that it has come to that. And I wish that the county commissioners, and I think we need to look, the next time an election comes, and we need to find county commissioners that are willing to work with us, um, at least take some input. But anyway, that's my soap opera, soapbox, and I apologize for that.
No, that's fine.
But, but, but I, I agree with everything you say. I agree with everything that, that Jack Burrell is saying. I just feel that, you know, with this resolution, I feel like this is really one of those things that, you know, the city council and the mayor kind of guided us on what to do here. If they want us to go another, as I told them, if they want us to go another six, seven months and think that's in the city's best interest, fine. If they suggest we pull it now, I think, you know, I think that's fine. To me, it's more kind of a, a council mayor decision than a, you know, than a, than our commission decision.
One, one other, one other question. What about, what about the county properties that are within what I call within the, the city limits? Fairhope Avenue at the, at Roundabout, for example. You've got the northeast.
Like the courthouse?
No, on, well, the Roundabout.
Hunter, just take any of 100 of them. He's talking about he's got three acres surrounded.
The Roundabout at 13.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The whole northeast quadrant of that Roundabout is not in the city limits, but if you go a little bit further, you've got some city limits. So, how, how do we deal with the?
I, I think, and then something we've.
We need to be concerned about.
Yeah, we, we do, um, and Greeno, I mean, it's, it's, it's everywhere around the city and, and I think, you know, that's how to annex some of those. I mean, you've seen probably more annexations in the last, you know, six months than we've seen in, in some time with big acreage. So, how do we do that? It's, there's not one easy answer.
Art, I'd put it to you this way, and this is about all I'm willing to say in this public meeting. We, we need to do it diplomatically at first and, and try to reach a diplomatic solution with the county. If that doesn't work, then you pull out the nuclear option and.
Well, you know, it begs the question if there's not a, a way that it, I don't want to call it a citizen, but some combination of a committee that could, could approach landowners that fall within that fractured.
There's, there are mitigation strategies. There are strategies for that, Art.
Yep.
There are some strategies, there are some strategies for that.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll probably hear more about that and be asked to help with that soon, too.
Yep. Yep, I think a door-to-door approach and immediate, you know, the first step and see, see who, who's, who wants to be in Fairhope and.
There are about a half dozen people that could be annexed in that were just about double the size of Fairhope.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep, so I, I think, I think that's the, and, and being here, I know, didn't grow up here, but being here three years, there's something unique about Fairhope that I don't, for all the trials and tribulations, there was, there was not a border. You know, the, the 48 square miles was a Fairhope community. And, and unfortunately, this bill has forced the city as an entity to start thinking about where that border is. I mean, and, and that, that has, Art, some of your questions, it's going to go, there's, there's many other questions that, um, that, um, you know, where kids play sports, you know, I mean, how, we, we funded sports fields in Barnwell. We got football fields down there. We've got, you know, there is no fees. Everybody is, uh, it's, it's, it's a community. Everybody's part of it. Schools, police, you know, that was kind of a shocking thing to me. I'll tell you, I went nuclear on some of the, my suggestions, um, you know.
Not that kind of nuclear.
Yeah, yeah, like, not schools, not schools. But, but yeah, pull police back, pull, pull it all back. I mean, let's focus on, I'm a taxpayer, let's spend our money here, um, you know, the, and instead of subsidizing. And, and I think wiser, uh, more calm, uh, people prevailed and, but it is bringing that question up. And it's going to be challenges, I think, Fairhope faces for, for the near future. But I do want to, one more technicality.
I need to order the pub, open the public hearing, so don't let me.
Let me mention one more, just technicalities so people are, uh, this, this does allow us, we will continue to see, when we say new applications, that's any new development application. Final plat, for example, the state statute does allow us to continue those. So while that's technically a new application, we will be seeing those. Uh, we just won't, won't apply the subration, subration regulations to new projects or developments.
All right, thank you, Hunter. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And we're going to have a hundred percent participation from our public today. Thank you, sir. We, we need to put that in the stats somewhere on Fairhope.
We'll get you a stamp.
The, uh, on, on this subject, let me, let me just offer some, uh, thinking. The Baldwin County is getting close to entering the final phases of its preparation of its new master plan. And they're, I think, a little bit ahead of us, maybe a month or two ahead of us, uh, with our entering similar phases with our comprehensive land use plan. It seems to me that we have an opportunity for both the county and for Fairhope to get together to see that these, uh, master plans will mesh nicely over the next five years or with their implications for even further out in the future. Uh, I don't know if that app, activity is planned, but if it hasn't been planned yet, uh, I would recommend that our planning and zoning folks get together with county planning and zoning folks and start seeing that there are, that it's going to be free of any mismatches, conflicts, um, major, uh, mouth fit, uh, situations. I can tell you that, uh, the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board and Daphne's, uh, environmental advisory folks meet quarterly with the county's environmental advisory unit of their planning and zoning group. And we work on matters like, uh, stream buffers, uh, wetland buffering, wetland, uh, requirements and so on to, we're trying to reach a point where we can strengthen these requirements in a way that will suit every, uh, town in the county and the county. Um, so, uh, cooperation and fitting can be accomplished even, uh, to some degree, even as these, uh, changes in jurisdictions, uh, are implemented. That's my thought.
Thank you, sir. All right.
And just go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Do you mind just, uh, we, we have been working with the county. They've been to our meetings, we've been to theirs, we've talked to staff, uh, back and forth. You know, they, they can't match. A county has a different goal a lot of times in their subdivision regulations. Cities are more developed, so they can't match exactly, but I think we've done a lot of research, talked with them. They're implementing some new stormwater management, wetlands ordinances, but, you know, when you, when you look around, Fairhope's about as strict as, as anybody has.
I just wish the county would just do larger lots and then urge people, you know, when you're in those areas that smaller lots are something that might work, then urge them to go into the cities and see if the municipality approves, if they just did larger lots. But when, it's just so counterintuitive that they allow smaller lots than just about any municipality in Baldwin County.
That's where it could work. If they, if they decide, you know, they are rural and, and those, those people with 100 acre lots.
If they would just recognize that, then I'd have, you know, this could be a total blessing in disguise. And they'd say, hey, all lots have to be a minimum of an acre.
Yeah.
Well, this could be a blessing in disguise because it could push a lot of those, you know, could strengthen a lot of those boundaries up. And you have kind of the hinterlands with large, you know, estate, you know, farm slash lots and the closer areas with the more density.
And it's a good long-term solution because, I mean, that, you're always growing from the edges and it's most of us that think about long-term planning, that's typically what you want.
But unfortunately, it seems like the powers that are pushing a lot of that are the folks that want, you know, post-stamped lots for large subdivisions out where they don't have to do green spaces and landscaping and whatnot. But that's, I'll stay off my soapbox because I don't want to leave. Uh, public hearing is closed at this time. Uh, commissioners, do I have a motion? This is a recommendation to city council, correct?
This is a, this is a resolution of the planning commission which has the authority over the subdivision regulations.
All right, so this is, this is it, guys. Do I have a motion?
Yep, resolution 2022-07, I move that we approve or that we, um, accept a resolution.
Do I have, I have a motion, a second. Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Um, we have some old and new business and a pre-discussion items, Hunter.
Yep, and I want to keep this quick, but I do have, hopefully, you know, time's always limited. I'm going to be sending, uh, the planning commission some amendments. We really need to get some adopted next month, so I, I'm going to ask your favor, take those minutes, call me if you have an email you want to send to me. Because of this resolution, there's, needs to be a look at, uh, cleaning up some of the subdivision regulation language to deal with the jurisdictional words and things like that, a little bit of procedural stuff. So, if you have any questions and, and I can address those before the next meeting, I, I would greatly appreciate it instead of maybe getting to the next meeting and then just debate it for four more months. The goal is we can actually have some things adopted to clean up after this resolution. So, um, we also have an annual meeting. I think we, we have, uh, given opportunity once a year for anyone to come and speak about anything that the planning commission may deal with, may want to think about in the future or any feedback. So, that was the other, um, old and new business item. I do believe we have a, someone in the audience?
When is this? When is this tonight?
Come on up so we can see. We need our hundred percent participation for our.
This is our annual public meeting?
Now, Gary can speak on about 12 different subjects now, I guarantee you.
I'm ju, I'm just going to do one tonight.
Yes, sir.
The, the, the thing I've been thinking about, um, most recently is, uh, the financing of the maintenance of the subdivisions that we're putting into existence. Um, in other words, I think, I think what we need to do is take a careful look at, uh, what it's going to cost us in the long term on a year-by-year basis to maintain the infrastructure and the support for services that the city has to deliver so that a subdivision is, uh, through the revenue streams back to the city that it will produce, uh, paying its fair share of the maintenance costs. And that the future burdens of maintenance of infrastructure are not going to take our, uh, community, um, wealth, uh, down the drain at any point in the future, uh, should maintenance become greater than the revenues. But I think that it's, it's, it's really just a matter of when we have a, a substantial project, that we ought to do a little bit of cost-benefit analysis to see to it that the future revenue streams from that project are going to pay their fair share of their own maintenance of their facilities. That, that's, that's something I think we need to start thinking about. I think it's going to begin to show its head in our, uh, comprehensive land use plan.
Right, I think that, and that's something that, no, that's a very good point. Um, and it's something that we can hear, but we can't affect. That's a city council issue of, you know, impact fees and cost and taxes. We, we can't, you know, I don't think there's a mechanism where we can look at a cost-benefit analysis on a subdivision and approve it.
Well, it was, I, I appreciated that, that discussion was brought up as part of the comprehensive plan in terms of balancing different types of development and, uh, and looking at residential being the most costly, um, and then some kinds of like commercial li- being the most costly, and then some kinds of light commercial maybe being the least costly, but I would add, you know, residential doesn't just have to pay for itself, it, we also have years of deferred maintenance and maintenance on older utilities that needs to be paid for. It seems like there's a place for that in the comprehensive plan, and prioritizing, obviously, you're not just prioritizing profit, but balancing the needs for financial sustainability with all of our other needs.
And I think that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish within a comprehensive plan. So, it, pretty much any, most comprehensive plans you look at, go to the back page, and there's a, what is in essence, a to-do list. You know, there's the things that we're not accomplishing here, but after looking, here's what we're seeing today, the changes since the last version of our plan, and then where we're, what our vision is for the future, and maybe some of those things that need to be accomplished. So I think acknowledging those, and we've been talking about those for 18 months during this comp plan.
Well, I think, I think it's such, and Rebecca makes a very good point to the, you know, looking at the, you know, properties that are here already as well, because I think it's always funny when you listen to people who have lived in Fairhope for a long time, and they say, you know, here, these people, you know, come in, you know, the newcomers come in, and we're spending all, you know, blah, 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 where, when you look at all of the developments in the 1970s around the fruits and nuts, well, back in the 30s and 40s for the fruits and nuts, or the 70s around, you know, Kiefer and some of that, or, you know, Kirkland and some of that area, or out at Myrtle and Ingleside, the city used to pay for the roads, pay for the sewage, pay for the water, they paid for everything. And they were just so happy to have people come here. And then, you know, builders would build the houses, and here they were. So the people living in these older areas that are complaining about the new folks whose developer ran the two-inch line, you know, you know, two miles to get there, that everybody's got now fire service from, and did all the infrastructure and all of everything, that they compare, complain about them, where they're the ones with the older infrastructure that nobody ever paid for, that the city's having to develop with, you know, no impact fees or anything.
Well, and just one last, I think, including that in the comp plan gives us a chance to look at the balance of uses, and when we have so much pressure for residential, and it changes seasonally, but right now, there's so much pressure for residential, it just gives us another tool to look at how that needs to be balanced, and to push back on just being swallowed up by residential development.
Yeah, and I do think that's, that's a good use of land, how...
I'm looking at mixed use.
Yeah, how mixed use can happen, but how some of that tax base from commercial is going back in to support the impacts of residential. I do think that's, that's something you're always, and ideally, you're kind of blending with that comp plan with a strategic plan to see, okay, we can't handle everything in the planning commission, but certainly, there's some, there's things we do need to be looking at in the city.
And that's where we need guidance from the city council, things like, you know, we've always been kind of concerned about big boxes and the looks and that kind of Greeno Road or the 181 look, but on the other hand, that's a lot of revenue coming in from those types of businesses that, you know, we're not as concerned about that on the P and Z, but the city council has to give us, you know, guidance on that, just for the, because at the end of the day, they got to pay the bills.
Well, and we look at, we look at cash flow, especially from utilities standpoint, and cost of services like garbage collection, and we've kind of raised our fees on that, so we know that we're not falling further behind, but just to touch on that, and property taxes, you know, go to pay for a lot of the maintenance of streets, and it pays for police service and things such as the equipment that we give to the fire department, which is a volunteer fire department. But, you know, we're doing pretty well financially, just to tell the planning commission, you may all already know all this, but you read in the news about the infrastructure and how we are behind, and I think that some of that was just, was just due to, it's some incredibly explosive growth that we just couldn't keep up with. So, you know, we're going back and picking up some of those projects that, you know, had we forecast, you know, 100% growth in, you know, 15 years, we may have put it in the budget, I wasn't on there 15 years ago, but they may have done that. So we're going back and we're making good on that, and we're not borrowing a lot of money. So if you look at the borrowing that the city's doing, we're not doing much of that at all. In fact, we're doing none right now, and not only did we not borrow money, but we've paid off in the last 10 years. We have paid off about $45 million worth of debt. Now, since we freed up the funds that we, that we're no longer using to pay off debt, we have additional monies now to pay for some of these improvements. So we, you know, we're not going into a whole study, we do that in the budget process every year, and look at the cost of services and the cost of infrastructure and utilities and things like that. And if you look at what we've paid off just in the last 10 years, we're doing extremely well.
I'd like to entertain a motion to increase our pay to $24,000 a year for the P and Z members.
From zero.
From zero, right? Yeah.
Just doubling.
Yeah. And I do want, you know, there has been other changes, so just exactly what you...
That wasn't seconded, just...
I'm moving on, trying to step on toes here. The, but, but just, just for instance, some of our utilities, you know, some of the fees and recalculations that have been added, and, you know, we've got aid to construction costs, you know, because there's a cost of doing business here. We also have system development charges, you know, so that's what kind of goes back into making sure, you know, it's one thing to, to supply aid to construction on a site, but it's another to make sure the whole system, whatever system that is, water, sewer, electric gas, you know, is maintained to the quality and can handle that, because it's, within a system like that, one location is not the only thing you've got to worry about. It's connecting, a real connected environment, so...
And it does put a throttle on development to some extent, you know, it slows it. Some people would think not enough, some people would want more of a barrier to entry, but it does throttle it down somewhat. Not everybody can do everything they want in the city of Fairhope. I know up here, we may not feel that way, but somebody finds a way, but...
Then also, to be clear, the, what the city takes in for the subdivision as far as infrastructure, we don't maintain any of the green space or the drainage facilities, it's only what's in the right-of-way that the actual city is maintaining, just in case anybody out here is wondering, the city doesn't take care of that portion when a subdivision does come in.
Some of the old ones that have old retention ponds, they come to the city and ask for help, because they never budgeted, they were never told that the city was not going to maintain that, but we're, we've fixed a lot of those problems.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mike, I'm glad you said something, because I was going to suggest this is how it's going to be.